Good afternoon, and I'd like to call a last meeting of February to order. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilman John Roberts, and I will lead us to in respect to the flag. Please rise.
Dear Lord, thank you for the privilege to serve our community. Please bless us as we meet to make decisions that promote the common good of all the citizens of Anderson. Tonight, we also ask that you be with the family and friends of our retired fallen firefighter, Captain Walker Holcomb. As always, we ask that you watch over those who serve and protect our safety and our freedom. These blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our February ninth meeting have been distributed. Any questions or additions to the minutes?
Make a motion that we approve a matter presented.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of February ninth passed unanimously. We have no old business, we'll move directly to our new business, and we have a request consideration of a referral to the planning commission, a petition to revise a PDD document for track A of the Mayfield located off Harriet Circle. There's more?
Mr. Mayor, just a question, I would say that item one and two are both referrals. Do we mind if we loop both of those together since they are both referrals to the planning commission?
That'll work. Our second items, a request consideration of a referral to the planning commission, a petition to rezone six twelve North Macduffie Street from limited office to neighborhood commercial. Mr. Moore?
Again, these are referrals, they begin the public process, and so, once you refer them, we begin to gather the detailed data for public presentation.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we refer both of these to the planning commission.
Second. First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Roberts. Yes. All those in favor say aye. Both items one and two of new business, referring unanimously to the planning commission. Our third item is request consideration to purchase five vehicles for the police department. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Stewart's here, he knows the drill, he's making his way up. Hopefully, you won't have a whole lot of questions. This goes back to this last budget cycle, when we began to look at the capital needs for the whole city, and certainly, police cars are one of the ones that we have. This will be the first time, other than grants, in about five years that we've purchased through our capital improvement program, new police cars. Due to cash flow, there's actually eight in this budget, but just due to cash flow, we're buying five at this time, and we'll get the other three as the year progresses, and business license, and some other revenues come in. So, these are five new 2014 Dodge Chargers. Are you familiar with those? We have those on fleet. They're six cylinder models, which is what we use, they have the full, three-year, thirty-six month warranty bumper-to-bumper, and the five-year, hundred thousand mile warranty for the powertrain. These are on state contract, and the state contract belongs to Butler Dodge, and we'd recommend that you buy these five. Our total state contract price is a hundred sixteen thousand, eight fifty-seven, twenty. That works out at about twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars per vehicle.
Thank you, sir.
These will replace five others that are, need to be retired.
Got Mr. Roberts, then Mr. Stewart.
Chief, you've found that you've got some more of these that you've sort of tested to know how they hold up. These hold up very well.
We purchased the last round through the East Share Drug Bunny in 2013. This totals, we currently have fourteen of the Chargers in the fleet. We find that these vehicles are very adequate, in fact, we can go with the V-six high-output model, there's a lot better savings on gas. We're averaging eighteen, nineteen miles a gallon, whereas the Crown Victoria gets about twelve.
Great.
Mr. Stewart?
Chief, or John, maybe, you know, a year, a couple of years ago, I know we had Kerry here, we talked about the pros and cons of purchasing vehicles versus the lease purchase program that we had, because it was saving us a lot of money from a budgetary standpoint by going through that lease purchase program, where we would lease vehicles and turn them back in. I think somewhere out of Georgia or Augusta, where we had that agreement, why did we switch from that program and started buying vehicles again? And then, is it a cost savings that we're doing it this way now, because back then, it was a cost savings that we leased them versus purchasing them?
Well, we may have told you that, if we did, I stand corrected, because really, the lease purchase is just a financing method. It's called a lease, but in the end, you own them, you don't turn them back in.
You gotta buy out.
Yeah, it's just, it's like financing them over five years, it's legal to lease purchase in South Carolina, so it's cheaper to buy outright than it is to lease purchase, because in the lease purchase, you would have a finance charge, you'd go through one of the local financial institutions and buy them. So, I apologize if we conveyed that message.
I may have misunderstood.
Yeah, it's a lot cheaper if we can buy outright than lease. Probably, we're doing that, and you're gonna see that again, it's not always the case. The next thing that probably come to you will be four sanitation trucks. Well, that's over a million dollars, and as you know, there's only eight hundred and eighty thousand, best-case scenario, that's gonna be in the capital improvement fund this year. That's where these are coming out of. So, we will have to lease those. We need four today. That's another discussion.
Sure.
Some of you on the finance committee, I know Dr. Thompson, the mayor, John, I believe, and Steve kind of saw that, but we will be paying the finance charge in those cases, but that's cheaper than trying to keep that old stuff running, in that case. Thank you, though, good question.
Mr. Chapman?
The price of the vehicles, that include fully equipped with cages and lights and decal?
No, sir, that's just a base vehicle.
Okay.
I find we get a better price by dealing with companies one-on-one than dealing with a outfitter.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we accept it as general approval.
First by Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. Roberts, Mr. Harbin.
I'm good.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passed, announced. Thank you, chief. Our next item is request consideration to approve the Accelerate Anderson Downtown Challenge. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask if Linda will come and give you just a little bit of briefing, but I'll steal a little bit of her thunder. This went to the downtown committee and the next item about a week ago, and so, Linda sent out the notes from those meetings for those two items, but she'll kind of describe again, so the public will fully understand these two programs, and they're both very positive for the community, especially from an economic development standpoint.
Thank you. It is true that the, sometimes the best ideas come from other places who've had the benefit of trying those as good pilot programs. We get the benefit here in Anderson of learning from the city of Spartanburg and what they've done with their downtown challenge, and so, our program that we're proposing for you tonight called Accelerate Anderson Downtown Challenge does mirror that program in Spartanburg, and we hope certainly will mirror the success that Spartanburg has had. This is a retail challenge, this is meant to take our economic development efforts and accelerate the opportunities for new retail development within the downtown area. And one of the things that it does, we feel very strongly about whenever we have studied something and learned the benefits of it, as in the assessment that Hillary Greenberg did for us most recently, it identified some specific areas or niches or opportunities for retail growth in downtown. So, this challenge will certainly focus on trying to use those niches. The program itself is, will be an application program, where people who have proposed businesses will submit their applications. We would hope in the end that we would have three successful applicants, who would then go through a program where we would be offering assistance with property owners who are willing to let their properties potentially be used for these new business ventures, and the city, our funding that we would propose to go forward with this program would help to offset some of the cost, principally in the form of assisting with their monthly lease payments. So, the winners of the challenge would be entitled to twelve thousand dollars each to help their, the cost of locating in a particular building downtown. What we are proposing is, as you will remember, when we sold the one-twenty-seven East Whitner Street property to Earl Furman, the proceeds of that sale were, have been specifically earmarked in the Economic Development Fund, and we promised that before we proposed spending any of that money, that we would come back to you all with a plan that helped use those dollars and leverage those dollars and continue to rebuild those dollars. So, we're asking in our proposal tonight that the funding, fifty thousand dollars to fund the Accelerate Anderson Downtown Challenge, come from the proceeds of that sale, fifty thousand dollars from the Economic Development Fund, and then, we believe, based upon certainly Spartanburg's success, that we not only will see the economic benefits of that, we'll be able to not only pay this money back to the fund, but see it grow exponentially. Just to give you an example, in the city of Spartanburg, they actually were successful in recruiting six businesses that they provided direct assistance to, and four additional businesses decided to locate, because of all the buzz and the excitement that was created out of that. Ultimately, the city of Spartanburg realized more than a million dollars in new revenue as a result of those businesses. So, I think we can see an opportunity for this to generate some excitement, fill some niches in our retail sector in the downtown, and we are proposing, as is the downtown committee, that we, that you all authorize the expenditure of fifty thousand dollars from the Economic Development Fund, and we can start this program in March.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. The, as Mr. Moore mentioned, I think this came before downtown committee twice.
It did.
This year, or latter part of last year, and I think Mr. Harbin, Mr. Chapman, myself, Mr. Kirby, and I think Mr. John Roberts was at our last committee meeting, and we talked a lot about it over those two meetings, so I would open it up to any other comments, committee members, or any other council questions.
I'd like to ask if the renovation portion of that garage is complete now or near completion?
Of the space in our parking garage? Yes, ma'am, we're getting very close.
And so, the three we're talking about here would be located there?
They would, these would not be. These would occupy private, privately-owned buildings. We've already talked to a number of property owners, of course, we'd be willing to work with anybody who owns property downtown, but we, we've identified at least a number of seven different properties that could be used for this type of challenge. Now, and we tried to put a variety of properties in play, because depending upon what your proposed business is, you may need more or less square footage, or you might have certain characteristics. It will also be part of the, part of the program is that whoever is a winner of this challenge will be working directly with that property owner to negotiate the space and whatever kind of improvements, and, you know, how much the property owner may want to put into upfitting a building for a particular use. So, those kinds of negotiations will be more tenant to landlord or property owner, but our dollars would help to defray the monthly lease cost of opening in one of those properties.
What's the criteria for a person to qualify?
Well, we have all of the, and in fact, in your package, you'll see, it's a pretty detailed, pretty detailed process. The, the idea is that once the applicants, once somebody applies to be in the program, then they will be given the opportunity to take their outline of their business plan and then refine it further, so it becomes a true business plan, and not just maybe, maybe a wish. It becomes a little more defined, and will help them, the whole idea behind the challenge is, our involvement is to help a prospective business know how to put their business plan together, but to match them with people in the business sector, whether it's financial, legal, whatever that might, accounting, whatever that might be, to help that business have a really good chance at success.
So, these seven buildings that you've already identified, are they downtown, Main Street?
They're downtown, in a variety of places.
Ms. Stewart?
What is our economic development budget? You know, what, do we have a dollar, what's the dollar amount in our budget that we have out there?
For the whole?
I guess what I'm asking is that the fifty thousand dollars that's supposed to be funded is coming from your economic development?
It's the proceeds.
Department, but then it says, a portion of the proceeds will come from the sale of the Earl Furman sale, so you got a portion of this fifty thousand coming from that, where's the other portion coming from?
No, 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 the proceeds, maybe, maybe we phrased that incorrectly, I mean, clarify that. The proceeds of the sale was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is specifically earmarked in the economic development budget, and we can't spend it without your approval. So, what we're asking tonight is, out of that one hundred and seventy-five thousand in sales proceeds, we'd like to take fifty thousand of that for funding this challenge.
I think the way it's worded, it maybe looks like a portion of it is coming from actually coming of that hundred and seventy-five.
That's, that's not the intent.
No, good.
And the idea, too, is if these businesses are successful, and they generate taxes and business license, then the fifty, the first fifty they put goes back.
Goes back.
And then, you can do it again.
Somewhat like an enterprise fund philosophy.
Yes.
Yes. Anything, Mr. Harbin?
I mean, you know, we, we sort of discussed that a little bit, I mean, the fifty thousand is the budget on it, because, you know, we know that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, that thirty-six would be to the winners, so there's fourteen budgeted to promote the event, and that's our budget, we're not necessarily saying we're gonna spend it all.
Correct.
But that's what we've, we think can certainly, you know, entertain, you know, that, and with that, I'd like to make a motion, we approve it.
First, by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts, further discussion?
I have one more coming.
Mr. Chapman?
I think ideally, what we were looking at in the, in the committee was, is it could potentially be a, if somebody has a business that's already up and running successfully at home, but they, they need that next step to get, maybe it's somebody baking at home that's doing a bakery or some other sale-type business that they want to go then to retail, so it, it gives them that next step to be able to get out and, and start a business of their own.
That's correct.
With a, with a storefront.
Right.
Do you have, you know, an incubator, you know, in the building?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be still working on that toward bringing in some?
Yes, ma'am, now, they're two different things, and thank you for asking, but I'll clarify that. This is retail-oriented, whereas in the, in the eMERGE space, your focus is more on technology-oriented, it's healthcare, it's IT, education, and culinary, culinary arts, food science. So, they're, they're similar, but their focus on being retail or, or kind of more technology end is different in that regard. So, they might, they, they're, they still both have the goal of generating and creating new business opportunities, so entrepreneurs, and, and they would be found whether they're in the eMERGE space, or whether they're a new retail business, you know, downtown. So, they're very, very similar, but they're just different in their focus.
So, the eMERGE persons would have not been identified yet, right?
Not yet, we're not quite there, but we're, we're this close. I, I would expect that to kick off in March also, so the, I think the good thing about this, and what certainly what Spartanburg found with their challenge, was the more conversation and discussion and energy that there was going on about, you know, new business opportunities, it fueled more conversation and more business, and that's why they were successful in helping with direct assistance to, to six businesses, but four more came along as a result of it. So, I think we're, we hopefully will see that same kind of energy and interest in both of our programs.
Mr. Chapman?
The, the one thing, I guess the way I look at it to clarify it, is that eMERGE is, is the product has not been invented yet, and they're developing a product where the, this particular program is already, you have a product to sell.
Maybe.
It gives you a storefront.
Maybe, yes, yes.
To do that, but I think the eMERGE can then develop into this particular program, so it'll?
They're very complimentary, and that's the good part, yes.
So, I'm a little confused, you said that eMERGE persons, companies have not been discovered yet.
Well, developing a product, but this one could be somebody who hasn't had a business before, they're starting up, they could start a brand-new business as well.
We will, we will go through, Dr. Thompson, we will go through a similar process for eMERGE, and it's actually, you'll, you'll see a little bit more probably late, probably this week about that. The startup boot camp will be the terminology that we use to find people who want to apply for eMERGE in terms of a business plan and a new idea, whether it's a product, whether it's a service, that kind of thing. So, they're, they're different, but they're very similar, and both are tools that we will have at our disposal for advancing our economic development efforts. So, this all fits under your, your umbrella of this new way of doing business in trying to create something we don't have down here now, both in the, in the, the four sectors we're focusing on in eMERGE, and in the retail sectors we're focusing on for the challenge.
Last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would eMERGE applicants be given financial assistance, too?
We, we certainly are trying to put all of that together, so that we can either point them toward our business development loan program, depending upon who, who fits where, or other financial assistance, that's part of the mentoring process that this lends itself well to, is connecting them to the right kind of resources that can help them move forward. You know, like legal services, for example, if you're starting a business and you need to start a corporation, you might need the help of someone in the legal field to help you navigate that. By the same token, you need some financial assistance on the accounting side, so you make sure that your financial plan is solid. So, our role would be to help put the applicants together with the resources that can help them be successful.
Thank you. And also, with the success of Spartanburgs, I think, too, that through ten at the top, the, one of their five thousand dollar grants went to the city of Westminster, and they're doing a similar program.
Right.
That, that is modeled after Spartanburg's program, too, so it's a good thing, and I think we'll do well by it.
Thank you.
First and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passed, announced, thank you. And as Linda said, I think that the big thing is, is that the city and this council's been very proactive in, in helping small businesses, and that's the bottom line. Our last item of new businesses, request consideration of proposed amendments to the bylaws for the Anderson Community Development Corporation. Ms. Moore?
Again, Linda will take this one, too, it's another tool for our economic development of changing the scope of the Anderson Development Corporation, or adding to the scope of Anderson Development Corporation, so that we might be in the receipt of some more possibilities for jobs and revenue base. But Linda will describe kind of what you're doing here, and what the next step will be if you approve it tonight.
Yes, as John mentioned, this, this is, we're making you aware of something that we think is important as we move forward. Your, we've had an Anderson Community Development Corporation for a number of years. The bylaws called for that assistance that that corporation provided, to be provided to people who were in specific geographic areas. It mentioned our redevelopment areas, which was north side, south side, east side, west side, and the downtown, and now, with our Economic Development Division and our focus not being just centered on a particular geographical area, the bylaws really need to reflect that we're focusing citywide, and the part of making that change means we need to actually change the bylaws to make that happen. So, of course, you all are at arm's distance from the Community Development Corporation, so the board, that existing board, even though they have not been active in the last couple of years, that board will need to actually take the next step to consider truly amending their bylaws. If they, once they amend the bylaws, the bylaws will then come back to you for your official approval, and you will then really be asked to approve those bylaws, and the next step would be appointing or reappointing members to that corporation board. So, again, the major change in this is to have the focus and the, the benefits of that corporation be accrued to the city as a whole, anywhere in the city, not just in those geographic areas. And I think it can truly help our economic development efforts go forward, as that board would be able to apply for grants. Sometimes, there are grants out there that the city is not eligible for, but that type of nonprofit could be eligible for applying for, you could accept donated property, there are a lot of things that that corporation can help move forward in a different way than it did before. So, we certainly would, would ask that tonight, you, you don't really have to do anything other than tell us to continue to march forward, and as we do, we would bring it back to you for your specific approval. You also don't have to put any money toward the effort tonight, this is simply saying you believe we're headed in the right direction and keep on going.
Mr., Ms. Stewart and Dr. Thompson?
Linda, I don't have a problem with us continuing marching forward, and I know, in reading the program specifics, we're talking about, you know, what the board should reflect, you know, accounting sector, financial, legal sector, that type of thing, but?
Right.
I think it's important, as you're trying to drive this train to be a broader perspective, I think it's important, as we restructure our, this board makeup changes, it's very important that we remain, that we maintain representatives from our five redevelopment areas, which are the east side, west side, north side, south side, and the ABC streets.
Right.
And those are our five major redevelopment areas, and I think, as we expand, just make sure that we stay inclusive of these neighborhoods. sure that we stay inclusive of these neighborhoods because this was how all this came about to begin with.
We would agree with you, Mr. Stewart, and we also think that because of, um, we do think that it's important to have those various ex, areas of expertise involved, and we think we can meet all of that, since the composition of the board is between nine and seventeen members. It also includes having council representation on that, there as well. So we believe we can accomplish that and meet, meet our mission all the way around. And it doesn't, you're quite right, it, this does, just because we're making this change doesn't mean that we would no longer do some of the activities we did before. We would still be able to do those types of activities. This just allows us to do it citywide.
Sure. Good, good question. Mr., Dr. Thompson?
There is a current board, even though it, it never dissolved, but that was a board that was operating.
That's correct.
Had to, you know, we just didn't have any money to operate on. So what would happen to those members who were on the board? You know, some may have wandered away, uh, but there is a number of people who were serving on that board.
Yes, ma'am. And, uh, the first thing that after tonight, the first thing that we would do would be trying to, um, invite tha, that same board, um, to a meeting, and we would, we will have to communicate with them and tell them, you know, what it is that we're doing. But we, those people would have to be the very people who vote to consider changes to the bylaws. So certainly those people are the ones that we'll have the first conversation with, and, um, and we, you know, learn, as you said, there are some people who, um, uh, may not even be around anymore who serve on that, who have served on that board, but the bylaws call for them to continue to serve even if their term has expired until you either reappoint them or appoint a successor. So we don't know yet if they are even interested in continuing to serve. That'll be a conversation we have as our next step.
Great. So is this an action item? We still need to take action, or is this just information only?
You just tell us to march forward and we march forward. That's all the action you need to take.
Good. Do it.
I suggest we march, march forward.
Okay. I think we all agree with that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, before we get into administrative briefing, I see that we have in the audience some of the chambers', um, Leadership Anderson class, and I don't wanna put anybody on the spot. Obviously, everybody who went through Leadership Anderson thinks their class is the best class. Is there a spokesman that, that wants to talk about anything?
Lenika, Lenika's our unofficial...
Come down here for us a second and, and tell us what's going on.
Thank you all for having us here this evening. We're excited because the agenda is brief. (laughter)
What does that say to us?
I'm sorry.
We're very efficient.
Thank you. Well, my name is Lenika Mussolini, and, um, as you mentioned, I have some more of my class members here, and we're excited to be here this evening to complete one of our homework assignments, but I wanna let you know that we all have developed a class project called the Community Career Connection, and we're partnering with Anderson School District Five, Anderson Five Career Campus. And the overarching goal of this project is to bring industry and community into the school. Um, we're providing soft skills training for the students, we're doing a career closet to provide them with clothing for interviewing, and, um, special events and that kind of thing. And then we'll culminate with open house night, where we will have industry representatives there inside of the school to meet with the parents and to meet with the students, possibly offer job opportunities, but to let them know what's going on in our economic development region, um, to open the eyes of the parents and to let them know, you know, manufacturing's not what it used to be, and there are many job opportunities available, and your student has options, whether that be to go into the workforce, continue at a two-year institution or at a four-year institution. And so we're excited about this project, and, um, we're just trying to get the community on board and get them excited about it, and the chamber has backed us one hundred percent. So, um, hopefully you will be hearing more about that project in the near future. Um, open house night will take place on April twenty-first at six o'clock PM at the Anderson Five Career Campus, and you all invited to come out.
Thank you a lot. Appreciate it. Good luck on your project.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm excited about giving away some old clothes.
You can knock those off at the chamber office or over at the school.
Great. Thank you. Administrative briefing, Mr. Moore?
Only the calendar tonight, and as we wrap up February, you'll see later this week, yeah, the finance committee will be meeting at noon on Wednesday. And just a preview, in the budget session, if you remember, uh, the goal was the sustainability of the city of Anderson and its services and its people. And the two things you identified were not only be able to recruit and retain good people, the other piece was capital equipment. Well, the finance committee's already taken the step. You saw some fruits of that last week with the dump truck and the wastewater, and now the police cars. So the other piece is to make sure that your compensation plan is one that will recruit and retain, uh, qualified employees. So that'll be their main mission. This will be the first meeting, and it'll take a couple more. So that's for Wednesday, and then as you flip the calendar to March, you'll see, and I'm sure there'll be so, a few other things added, but two things that come out on this calendar on, uh, March the twelfth is the Anderson County Municipal Association, and their role has probably become greater, as the mayor would share things like the Business License Bill and things like the Anderson County Transportation Committee. So if you have a chance to go, good opportunity to exchange some dialogue, and we are gonna host a meeting of the mayors earlier that week to talk about how we improve the roads and infrastructure of the entire county. Final thing I'd call other than the council meetings is on, um, March fourteenth is St. Patty's, uh, Lucky Me Color Fun Run, so you can get ready for, get in shape for that one. Okay? That's all we have.
Thanks, sir. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moving.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.